Okay, welcome one, welcome all to our meeting today. And you understand that we have some very helpful and insightful presentations coming today. Mr. DeHany?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first presentation will be from HRT CEO, William Harrell. He's going to brief you on a grant awarded to HRT by the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation. The grant is to partner as it relates to a regional microtransit demonstration project. The fan has a, the grant has a funds matching component. So he'll provide you some information about the project and the scope of the project for council's consideration.
Mr. Harrell, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm just going to provide some brief information on really the platform of what we've been working on for two years at Hampton Roads Transit. And then I'm going to invite Mr. Ray Amoruso, our Chief of Planning and Development, who will talk about the specifics of the microtransit pilot project. And I do want to emphasize this is a discretionary pilot program. We were successful in landing some state funds and certainly it's an opportunity if the city decides to participate in it. Just to lay a brief backdrop for those, the challenge in Hampton Roads has been, and certainly Mr. Vice Mayor Wood, who has been a former Chair of Hampton Roads Transit, knows that part of the challenge for this area is that we hadn't had any dedicated funding, which means essentially we've had six independent cities with different service levels. So what we've tried to do over the last two years is work really hard to identify the fact that when you look at the overall regional funding levels for public transit, we're very low for regions between one and three million citizens. In addition to that, as we've looked at other similar areas, you can see the cost for public transit is about 20% lower than standard peers. And when you look at the overall funding levels, we are about 22% less funding per capita than many of the comparative regions. So what we did two years ago, and the state was kind enough to fund a strategic plan, we really took a look at what a vision for the future would really mean, which is a connected core set of regional routes with a mix of mobility options that enhance access to jobs, economic growth, and quality of life. And we'll talk a bit about that in just a moment. I think the biggest outcome from that overall planning effort, and we had a very comprehensive public engagement process as well, was the fact that there needs to be standards, regional standards. Each city right now has independent service levels and it's difficult to navigate the region. But what we heard from customers, as well as those that don't ride public transit, is the fact that there needs to be better reliability of the system. So essentially, we identified with the work of many of your staff people, I want to recognize Brian Solis for his hard work, working with Ray and his team, and we identified 13 key routes that will be part of a 15-minute backbone with the full implementation of new funding. What is really important to emphasize is it greatly enhances the potential for population served by public transit, jobs served, as well as areas in walking distance to a major public transportation route. So basically, what we're talking about is better reliability, faster commutes, and new connections as the region has continued to grow. So what we've seen throughout the marketplace, and just as cities are struggling with the impacts of COVID-19, certainly transit has experienced that as well in terms of lower ridership. We've also seen shifts in consumer expectations and lifestyles. With people working from home, certainly that's impacted commuting patterns. Also, transit agencies around the country are looking at the fact that one size doesn't fit all. And I know that's certainly something we've heard clearly from Virginia Beach, we want to see improved bus service. And quite frankly, in many of your suburban and rural areas, there isn't a demand for a 40-foot or even a 29-foot bus. So what we want to explore with you, are there some new mobility options that could give you the ability to serve more suburban areas with public transportation? So with that, I'm going to have Mr. Amoruso speak to the specifics of the project before us. Mr. Amoruso, please.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager, and I want to recognize Dr. Ross Hammond from our TDCHR Board is here as well, our board member that represents your city. I'm going to cover the specifics of the microtransit demonstration project, which is a grant, as Mr. Harrell had said. And he kind of set it up nicely for me to introduce the concept. For those that may not be familiar with microtransit services, essentially what it is, is a demand-responsive service instead of a fixed route service where every hour, every half-hour, a bus would come. Rather, it's a cloud-based route optimization technology based on an app that you access through your mobile phone device, where you can book a ride, make an appointment with a few other people, share a vehicle, and take that to a central nodal activity center, or to a end-of-line like light rail, or to a high-capacity bus route. The state has what they call demonstration grant opportunities, and they encouraged us to apply for at least two. They're very interested in microtransit, for at least two, and we did. One in Virginia Beach and one in Newport News. Both of your cities have unique characteristics that lend themselves to demand-responsive technology, large geographically dispersed and different characteristics. The grant comes in the form of a state award of nearly 1.6 million, but it does require from each city a match of 30%, which in this case is $238,000. So it's a 70/30 split between the state and the city. Microtransit allows us to test, for the first time in this region, we have no demand-responsive service today, how its service characteristics and performance would work in a travel zone. HRT is envisioning this to be deployed as a turnkey operation, where we would solicit through a request for proposals, a provider that would provide the vehicles, the technology, the reservation system, the customer service system, even how they collect the fares. The duration of the project is anticipated to be 12 months. Six months of planning, marketing, and analysis to do the type of planning that we need to do and the marketing outreach before we launch a service, and then six months of actual operation of the service through the selected provider of that service. Some key characteristics for a successful microtransit zone should span between 10 and 35 square miles and have a rounded shape as opposed to a narrow or long shape. Should have at least a population combined with jobs of at least 35,000, enough to warrant, enough density to warrant some form of transit, but low enough that a regular fixed route service may not be the best form of delivering that transit. It definitely needs to contain a mixture of residential, commercial activities, and sometimes industrial, and it should not be overly concentrated one type of land use. And of course, it has the potential, just like most transit does, to serve many trips, many different types of trips, whether it's medical appointments, school appointments, going to work, going shopping, serving seniors and students. And it functions best when it connects to high-quality transit connections, when it leaves the zone, and that can be a little overlap with a connecting route, or in this case, maybe the end of line of light rail at Newtown Road, or the connecting to the Route 20, which is the highest-performing route in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia in terms of absolute ridership. So the proposal for the Virginia Beach demonstration zone area, we selected through those characteristics, this particular zone, there are some fixed route services that you fund today, mostly hourly service, that frankly, on the performance scale, doesn't do as well as some other fixed route service in your city. And it is a potential for maybe replacing that eventually, if this is successful, with demand-responsive service, or at least complementing it. It serves roughly the areas that you see listed here on the map. And it also includes touchpoints to all of these different destinations and employment centers that you see here as well. So this particular zone has a nice concentration, maybe you can see it better on your screen and on this large PowerPoint projection, but has a nice concentration of residential density in the center, but employment density focused on, as you would expect, on the Virginia Beach Boulevard, between the Virginia Beach Boulevard and I-264 corridor, which is a nice complement to your strategic growth initiatives that focus that type of job activity there. On a daily basis, that circle to the right represents what I call inflow and outflow. Trips that are generated outside this zone that come into this zone to do something, and trips that stay within the zone on a daily basis, and then trips that leave the zone to go elsewhere, whether it's east or west, north or south. Some of the zone characteristics, it's a little bit longer north to south. The boundaries are slightly irregular, as you can see. There's a population size of 78,000. You can see the split between residents and jobs. Commercial is in the center, toward the center-south, with more residential to the north of that area. Major connections to the Centerra Lee Hospital Complex and all the medical facilities along there, Newtown Road Light Rail, which could bring citizens into downtown Norfolk, and then the military Circle Janif Shopping Center. There's 4,400, as I had shown in the circle, inter-zone commutes that stay within the zone. And it does have good connections to high-quality service via the Route 20, the Route 15 on Military Highway, Route 21 up on Little Creek Road that goes to JEB and then Pleasure House Road. Service model, how would this perform? The provider would have, would pick up, after reservation is made, there'd be a virtual stop that the provider would tell the customer who made the call, "We'll be at the corner of Independence and Pika Street, Haygood, in 10 minutes." It would operate roughly between, as we see it, 5:00 AM and 9:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM Saturday and Sunday, at least a minimum of 106 service hours per week to beat a successful deployment of that type of technology. The zone would be covered by a minimum of five vehicles on the road at all times that can be deployed and dispatched as the calls come in. We're looking for a minimum in terms of number of vehicle hours, a minimum of 530 vehicle hours per week. The consultant that initially did this work for us has suggested at least 565 vehicle hours to accommodate what they call fluctuating demand. To make it financially viable, because we want this to be successful, we're looking to garner at least 350 rides per day, that's the minimum, but it'd be better if it garnered 750 rides per day. Vehicle productivity, we'd like to see at least four and a half, five to five and a half passengers per vehicle hour. Service or wait time for a customer waiting for the vehicle to arrive would be no greater than 15 minutes, with a walk distance of no more than a quarter mile to the nearest stop or less. And 95% of the rides should be picked up and dropped off on time within five minutes of the proposed window that was given at the time of the reservation. The types of vehicles, and there are several options, and as we go out for a request for proposals, the proposals would probably propose to us several different vehicle types that they would propose to us to use. They're not our 40-foot or 29-foot buses, but rather something that this picture shows, we call it a Ford Transit Connect, has a mid-range capital cost with lower operating cost. It's not suitable for larger groups, but is equipped with mobility access limits to at least three ambulatory seats. However, it does not have standing as a possibility. There could be shuttle types, we're all familiar with this, we see this a lot at airport shuttles, rent-a-car shuttles, which has a slightly higher capital cost and operating cost, but they can be equipped with bicycle racks and accommodate between eight and 12 passengers. Or we could have a mixed fleet of both types, depending how successful this is. So in conclusion, because what I wanted to bring forward today is that we do have some challenges in the times that we live in right now. This grant was written well over a year ago. We were notified of the award in August from the state. The Commonwealth Transportation Board acted in late October to award the grant. However, we did get a call from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation that said they would like us to wait for implementation as late as possible, don't feel compelled to start implementation in the spring because of COVID. The last thing I think customers would want to do right now is get close together in a small vehicle, and that would definitely tank the results of this demonstration project, as we're learning exactly what type of rider would want to be in a vehicle like this and what kind of destinations they are. So they encourage us to wait to actual implementation till late 2021, and assess over the summer whether the pandemic has slowed down a bit and there's more of a willingness for people to gather again. We do have at least six months of planning and analysis to work with the consultant, with the provider that'll be selected. But we do need to seek, and after the briefing, I know if there's an appetite to move forward, an ordinance will be asked for by the City Council for the matching funds. Without the matching dollars, HRT would not be able to accept the state dollars for the demonstration grant. And if you find it within yourselves to approve this, we would go out onto the street in conjunction, working with your city staff, for a request for proposals from providers. It'll take a while to do that. We would have a coordinated marketing campaign to advertise the service availability in that zone to the different businesses and residents in the area, and it would be a close collaborative process. That concludes my presentation, and Mr. Harrell and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, let's look over this way. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. And Ray and William, I appreciate you all coming out here. I've seen something similar to this out in Phoenix and in Las Vegas. Phoenix with their light rail and Vegas with their BRT, where they have kind of neighborhood circulator buses, which seems to be a similar microtransit thing. But I had three or four questions here. You didn't say this, what's the price per ride?
We don't know that yet until we hire somebody on board. There's a financial modeling that they'll have to do based on how many people per ride and how many trips per day. So I'm not quite sure what we're anticipating at this point for that pricing structure. We'd like to keep it as close as possible to the kind of fare structure we have currently, but I can't guarantee that. It has to make financial sense, both by the provider and by HRT.
Yeah, and I know the one in Phoenix and the one in Vegas were free, but they were neighborhood circulators. But so the other question I have, so this is not considered a fixed route, then?
It is not.
So it doesn't have impact on paratransit?
No, it does not. Because there's no fixed route service, there's no days of the weeks or hours, you know, or frequency of service. It's, you call and make a reservation.
So it doesn't expand your paratransit requirement?
No, because paratransit footprint is dependent on regular fixed route service.
So that, and then I guess the final thing that just concerns me a little bit about it is only having a six-month operating window. I think that would be kind of difficult for an outside, independent entity to come in and put that kind of capital in, buying or leasing vehicles, and setting up the infrastructure, only to have it for six months. Is it thought that there would be additional money from the state for this, or, I mean, do you not see that as a concern?
The idea is if, within six months, we would get a definite feel for how many people per trip would be using it, enough to come back and report, "It was a nice test, but it didn't generate the ridership we thought," or "It generated exactly what we thought," and that we would like to then add that to the menu of what you fund on a daily basis. We can offer you opportunities to perhaps remove the fixed route services in the zone. It's very low productivity currently, and perhaps your money would be better spent on a demand-responsive service. There's a few routes in here, like the Route 22, that don't do very well, and perhaps it's better spent on a demand-responsive service. So we can give you those trade-offs.
Okay, if I, Wilson, and then we'll get Ms. Abbott and Ms. Moss and Ms. Tenley.
Ray, thank you for coming today. And I think it's a good idea, and I think your zones and areas that you're going to be touching are really good ones. And I think a lot will depend on how you get the message out so that people
Yes.
People know that it's available. And I kind of like the vehicles be better, because I think it might be more popular than you think it will be. And if you can only put five people there, you know, it's kind of like the elevator, you keep missing the elevator because it's full.
That's right.
And you, yeah, it's every 15 minutes, but if it keeps passing you and it's full, it's not, that's, 15 minutes becomes a lot longer.
Right.
And, plus I don't like the idea of being closed in without windows. You get claustrophobic. So anyway, those are just my comments. I do think it's a good idea. It would be nice, I think Jim's got a point, six months does seem short, you know, maybe add a couple of months to it.
It's something we could look at.
To really get a good feel. But thank you so much for coming.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Abbott?
Hi, Mr. Amoruso, how are you?
Just fine, Councilwoman Abbott.
Good. I, well, I'd like to start, I've always been very interested in the microtransit, and I think it's a very interesting, I think it has really good potential for our city. So I'm in agreement with you there. I do have some questions about how the, I guess, the structure of it would work. Can, so if I live inside the service zone, I can utilize it only within the service zone or anywhere in the city?
You would utilize it to, and you would, they would ask you, "What is your destination?" And you might say Norfolk Centerra Hospital, you're an employee of Norfolk Centerra. And what they would do is they would say, "We can take you to Newtown Road Light Rail Station, where you can ride light rail in," because it's not a point-to-point service, I should make that clear. It gets you to the nearest high-capacity transit service activity center. And then you would transfer onto that to complete your trip. But within the zone, it can bring you anywhere within the zone.
So if I, but if I'm, what if I'm outside the zone trying to get into the zone?
This, it would not. This service is intended for residents and businesses and employees of the zone.
That's right. I just wanted to clarify that. So then, the other question I have, it was, I don't, the slides aren't numbered, but on the service hours, for the weekend, it says 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then on the weekdays, 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I'm just curious, since presumably we would be trying to connect with riders who are either trying to get to and from work within, hopefully within, you know, they, they're within a certain period of, a certain distance of where they live, do we have, is there any thoughts on, you know, potentially extending those hours on the weekends, especially for service-oriented positions?
Absolutely, there is. This was a suggestion, we had an early-on RideCo is a provider of this type of service, who helped us put together the analysis, and they had said, "We're giving you this window of opportunity so we can get a parameter around in some of the numbers." But of course, anything's flexible. They recognize that we have a lot of third-shift workers in this region, and perhaps it may not work best. That's something to be negotiated with the provider once we're at that point, that we can, we can work with staff to ensure that we have the right timeframes in the request for proposals.
Okay. And then my other question is about the vehicles being used, because one of the things, especially at bus stops, that I've noticed is there's a lot of young families often trying to use public transportation. And obviously, with a bus, you don't have the issue with car seats on them. So how does that work in a situation of, you know, I'm a mom and I have a two-year-old and a five-year-old, my kids have to ride with a car seat. In a vehicle like this, not riding in a car seat really wouldn't be an option. So is, is the presumption that they would haul a car seat or booster seat with them, or?
No. The provider would have that accommodation in the vehicle. We would make sure in the specification of the request for proposal that they recognize that the vehicle that they provide has to have the accommodation for children who require a car seat.
Okay. Yeah, oh, I'm glad to hear that. That was one of my, that was something I was concerned about. And then the other question I had, and the city that I heard that was doing it eludes me, but I've heard of municipalities and their public transit partnering with companies like Uber and Lyft, and doing something similar, but with their fleet that's effectively already deployed and operating. Is that something that's been considered or on the, you know, available, or, you know, since they, I, my concern is we put in, put in, put out all the money for the infrastructure to own these vehicles, and then we don't decide to pursue it. I guess what's the?
So that's a good question. That's why this is a turnkey operation. HRT is not proposing to buy the vehicles. Rather, the companies come forward, most of these partner with automobile providers like Ford. They have a fleet of leased vehicles that they own, and they go around and shop their ware, so to speak, at different cities and transit properties around the country. So HRT is not proposing to invest in any of the technology and the vehicles. It's a complete turnkey operation, so there's no vehicle ownership or investment by HRT. We don't have those type of vehicles in our fleet today, and we would not do that in a pilot project.
And then my last question is, what is the cost, what is the city's cost per rider currently on?
It's, the way the cost allocation agreement works, the transit's heavily subsidized. So the fare that you pay, the $2 doesn't pay for the true cost of a ride. So the cost, if you, if a person was to board a bus and drop the true cost of that ride, they'd be paying about each-way $6.40, as opposed to the $2. Now, we get a lot of federal funding, state funding, discretionary grants, and Fairbox revenue that offsets the true cost of the ride.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And tell your girls I said hi.
I sure will.
Mr. Moss?
I have a number of questions, but I want to first start off with, what's your notional breakout of how you plan to allocate the roughly $1.8 million, which also includes locality funding? Should we participate? What part of that's going to be going to, I call it the analytical software part? What do you expect to spend on the marketing, the first six months? How much of your money will be expended?
There's that 1.597 from the state, coupled with the money from each, from, thank you, Mr. Harrell, from each city, is roughly split in half. The zones are more or less the same size, just different cities. It's anticipated between, if I remember my numbers right, it's about 280,000 to 320,000 on marketing that we would spend over the course of the lead-up to the service and during the actual six months of it. Again, it's our best guess, it was a, our best professional guess based on an application to the state.
Well, now that you mention, I like collaborative processes, and this body of the council was never in the front end of this process, so we couldn't ask the critical questions at that time. But now we can today at the back end, which is unfortunate. I think we all would agree. But my concern, Mr. Mayor, is if you have this block of money, and you can expect that someone who's doing a six-month pilot is going to fully expense their capital in, during that six months. So not only are you getting the acquisition, he's going to do depreciation, he's going to get the operation, you're consuming a lot of money before you ever get to paying labor costs for service delivery, you know, the insurance. So what I'm concerned of is, in reality, when you get the RFPs, and you must have something in your mind budgeting-wise, what you think that threshold is. I realize you don't want to say that here, I appreciate that. But there is a number. And when that number isn't reached, because they go over, which in today's environment could easily be true, especially since drivers are one of the hardest things to acquire because of all the restrictions that you have to meet, and it eliminates a lot of the labor pool. Just look at the problems we have with bus drivers. So I'm curious as to, when are you going to know in this process that, "Oh, I busted my budget, I can't award the RFP, I can't deliver this service in this area because I don't have enough money"?
Well, it's a great point, Councilman Moss. If we get proposals that are outside the scope of the budget, we would not be able to award a contract, because that is the money that was given to us from the state. So we would-
My question is, what, in your timeline, you have a timeline to issue the RFP, and you would issue it when?
Well, because of COVID, we originally were going to issue it this, this spring, but we're not any longer.
Let's just say milestone zero. Whenever you issue the RFP, whatever that is, it could be October, it could be whenever it is, you would have a 45, 60-day period of response, and you would award within 120 days?
That's correct. We have to take it to the board for award. So there'd be 60-day period of response. If there's multiple submissions, we might do some interviews. Then we would have to take it to the Operations Oversight Committee for approval, and then on to the board, the next board meeting of TDCHR.
Because here's a question I'm getting, I have some other ones. So if we're going down through this planning/marketing process, and we get here and we say, "Oh, this, our marketing tells us that this notional plan, which is what this represents, really isn't what's going to work." And so we decide we don't want to do that because it's not going to sell, to be kindly. Can we stop there? Or does, to make the grant good, we actually have to execute a demo?
We could. Oh, absolutely. We would not recommend moving forward if the economics don't make sense.
Because here's what I want to get to next, because I'm glad, those are all good answers. They make sense to me, is, so we have census tract data for- Is, so we have census tract data for all these, this area, which I hope that you're, you have looked at or will look at. I hope that you know what the car ownership density is in those areas, cause that's not in this report. Uh, and also where those people work. So you have to ask yourself, how realistic is it? This gets back to my point, which remains under light rail. If you take the time that you travel from your door to the virtual pickup point, and then you travel to the virtual stop where you connect with other transit that takes you to your final destination, that's how I heard the explanation, how long is that totally lapsed time? And how does that compare, which isn't in this analysis, when someone says, eh, let me just get my car. By the time they get here, I'm already a third of the way of where I'm going and you can't compete on time. So I'm, I'm trying to understand in here, what is, Mr. Councilman Wood came up with this term. I liked it. The choice rider? So if you're going after choice riders, what is the, what are you offering to the person who can drive their car? Cause a high density of ownership for Virginia Beach is extremely high. It's more than one vehicle per driver, in fact. But, so to get them to say, nah, I'll take this, this service instead.
What we're offering the driver is, that zone, that, if I bring that map up, has hourly service on two and a half routes, I'll call it, in the wrong way. Um, you're, you're free from the tyranny, if you want to call it that, that you're locked into an hour schedule that, um, and you can make an appointment and a reservation and within fifteen minutes have a vehicle pick you up to your destination.
I understood that. I'm referring to the lifecycle time, public transit, this model, even though it's pickup service, relative to the person walking out their do- door, getting in their car and going to the same final destination. How does your analysis show that you're competitive? What people value most is their time. So how are you competing on the time dimension?
Well, I, I cannot answer that question at this moment because we have not done that analysis yet. What I can tell you, there's more than just time. If you use your car, you're going to have, most people have to pay for parking. Um, and then again, I, I know we're talking about choice riders, but there are people who use transit that don't have a choice. And this is definitely a better service for them than the hourly schedule that we offer today.
Well, this gets back to the point of what are we doing the pilot for? If we're doing the pilot, Mr. Mayor, to improve access for people who don't have transportation, which is why it's getting back to this hot density of vehicles. And we're looking at a cheap, cause I said when that route came up in the very beginning, about two or three budget cycles back, it didn't make any sense. But the same people that were here then are here now telling us that this is, the market analysis tells this is really attractive and this is going to work. Well, I drive by it all the time. The buses are mainly empty. It didn't work. But I'm glad you're acknowledging that it isn't a performance, but there are people on that route who need transportation. So I just want to make sure that, I think that the business case is not here for choice riders. I don't think you can show the time advantage gain and flexibility loss to do this, but I'll be interested to see. I think you can maybe make a case from a social obligation point of view, nothing to do with the economics. It's just because provide transportation, this might be a better choice than the thing that's underutilized tremendously, which is the current bus route. But, but I, I, I think it's a misrepresentation to say that within this, for people who have a car and this, and car transportation is not a cost barrier to them, that they would be attracted to use this. I, I just, I just don't think that's true. The other concern I have, it's for us, Mr. Mayor, is we're running a $24 million deficit already. Uh, we lost tax revenue, well, increased regional. We're now paying a regional tax for HRT overhead. Uh, but, and we are still wanting the same amount of money. So will any of this, uh, reduction, if we reduce reduction, I don't do B, but that's Route 22, I think it was, and we don't do this and this is a net, and we go to implementation. I'm thinking it's successful, Mr. Mayor, so we go the next step, right? So if someone's going to say, I want to continue this, well, that costs money. And a gentleman over there says, hey, wait a minute, we're $24 million short. Where's that money coming from? Fair question. So if it's an offset, even though we're still a deficit, it's easier to accommodate, I think. But I think it's also that then, then there would be some savings to us that we would recapture and I wouldn't want HRT to think that that money, the delta would be coming back to HRT in terms of service.
So, Councilman Moss, I think I made the point that if this is a success and we develop the ridership metrics that, that would make a financial success, we can go back and look at these fixed route services that you're currently funding and make a recommendation to staff and to city manager that perhaps you're better, better off expending money in support of the demand responsive service and saving some money from paying for the fixed route service.
Well, I do know getting rid of fixed routes before, when they had paratransit, has a, is a long due process route to make that happen. So I think council members need to realize that that may be out of sync with our budget cycle before that's realized. I think that's a fair assessment. Would you agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Once, before I asked, cause I was trying to see, what is the latent demand for HRT services? What if we made it free? Would anybody else ride it? You might recall those conversations that we had. And all the barriers of why we can't make it free, which seemed crazy to me. Uh, you know, nothing like bureaucracy to keep you from doing real marketing and finding out the real demand. But the question I have is, could we make this service? Cause there is a lot of disadvantaged neighborhoods within this arena and with children, I might add. Would we have the option of making, if we were doing a demo, at least at the beach, to make it fare-free? To really truly test what the latent demand is and whether or not price is, and we can compare that to predicted with fare and see if we outperform. I'm just asking a question. Don't know if they'll do that, but I think we ought to have a, a feel for it. Cause if it's totally free and the numbers are 200, that's a signal too. You know, that tells you something. And I would like, you know, we have very small percentage of our population that uses transit. You know, cause our car density is so high. It's 1.8%, I think. It's very low. And, uh, so we try to concentrate our money where it, where it does the most, most good, as you said, the Boulevard Route and Holland Road. So, but that aside, I, I have some comments, which I will share in writing with them. I've spent a lot of time on this presentation, hours. Uh, but I would like to go to the back to the front end and just make some general observations, cause I think they are important. I think that buses are a bridge techno, a bridge mode of transportation. I don't think the future is buses as we know it. People want to, maybe the micro system might be different, but it's not the traditional big bus service. It can't meet the time demands and responsiveness that you're competing against. And I just think it is not the future. And we should be thinking life after traditional buses. Uh, I think that's where we should really be, my personal opinion. And I think people working from home and other stuff are going to impact it. But I do think micro-level services, Uber, all these other things represent the future. And I didn't even think car ownership will come down, as do other forecasters, because they're going to have a car, but they're willing to use, come pick me up and drop me off at my house services versus going to a destination point to get a bus. Uh, I think that's where we're at. Uh, so when someone says we rank at the bottom of these, this was our first slide, you think we rank at the bottom of the list of transit offering hours and miles of service? I suspect there aren't many metropolitan areas that go, that match going from the beach to Williamsburg to Surrey to South Hampton County. I, I don't think LA even matches that square a mile. So I don't know that the mile comparison, and certainly no one's doing extensive bus service in, in Suffolk. But I think we've had the service that the political jurisdictions wanted to buy. That's the service we've had. And we represent the public. So we are getting the service that we want. So the fact that we're at the bottom, maybe the people are getting the service they don't even want at the top. Are they better than us? So I don't know that ranking. It ought to really be about, is the political jurisdictions who pay for the service getting the service that they want? Cause that's who pays for it. So I, I just think this bottom conveys a message that doesn't complement how well you do in part. That's one of the messages. I just think it's, it's not, uh, it's, it's implied to infer a message that's not true.
If, if I could just address that, I would say that, uh, you know, based on our discussions with economic development professionals around the country, certainly availability of workforce and getting them to, uh, the business locations are absolutely key. I think we saw that when Amazon was looking at this area. So, uh, what we've seen is those regions that do a really good job on economic development, in many cases have a more cohesive transit system. So clearly I think there's a basis to support that. I will say we were pleased, uh, with the work of the General Assembly this year. And certainly, uh, we have the onslaught of a potential dedicated funding to support, uh, those thirteen routes that we talked about, those core routes, which will provide for the first time fifteen-minute service throughout the region. Right now, it's very difficult to navigate from Newport News to Virginia Beach because each city has different, uh, uh, time schedules and what have you. So I do think there's an opportunity to improve that, uh, with the support of, uh, obviously you all and others.
Well, clearly I think the localities individually have a better sense of the mass transit they need than a central organization, but that's a difference of opinion. But I would like to go back because I think it's, you know, often we say lots of things about what people deserve. And then we say they deserve safe access, reliable and affordable. But no one ever wants to come back and define what affordable is. And I, and I think unless you can put a dollar value on something, in fact, in this area, and you can put the opportunity cost that go with that, that statement rings hollow, only because everybody deserves affordable and safe and reliable neighborhoods. But we don't put a police precinct in every neighborhood. So I think it sets an expectation, Mr. Mayor, that. About one other thing about spending per capita. Spending per capita is an input. It is not an output. So if we're putting in less than anybody else on a per capita basis and producing the results that we want and desire, that's a good, that's a good thing. I don't want to be the highest per capita investor. So no company would, they want to be the best performing in the marketplace. So I don't know what message you were trying to get across there. It kind of sounded like we weren't investing enough. But investment is relative to a requirement, not relative to a peer. And so I, I think we need to be careful about using per capita, uh, criteria. Schools are the same thing. How much I'm spending per student. Look at New York City. Does, or Norfolk doesn't equal output and results. And I think all of us are what? Trying to buy results, not just input. So I think there's a lot of homework that you're, you have to do during your six months.
Yes.
But I, I said, if we're going to do a pilot, I'm concerned that you have enough money to execute your pilot when you get the RFPs. And I'd also like to at least have us to think about what would be the option of just not charging a fare at all? Just to see if that has any impact, uh, on the amount of people in these, certainly areas using the service. Much like, give us some insight as to if we improve subsidies, could we improve access for the more economically disadvantaged in our community? But we don't have any data that tells us that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
Well, Mr. Moss and I have been debating transit for thirty years, since I chaired TRT. Uh, I'm really glad to hear him say that he likes the idea of a free fare as a, a way to, uh, measure this if we were going to do it. I think we do need more transit and it's such a, a problem though. I don't know what the answer is. When I looked at this, the thing that I saw was that this proposed area that you're looking at is, is the place where we have a lot of very old, stable neighborhoods. And I think of senior citizens. And I think of the other end of that line of the light rail being the Norfolk General Complex. And how often seniors need to get to doctor's appointments. And often it happens as people get older, driving a car is not always an option. And, uh, and so to seniors, transit is extremely important. Um, I don't know, I know that way back when, it's always been a problem. Handyride has always been a problem when you're scheduling appointments and so forth. And I, I kind of wonder if appointments, and I'm sure there are places that are doing it and it's working great, and that's what I'd like to hear about, um, it, rather than a, a fixed route. So I think that there are possibilities, but I was also thinking of, if we were going to do a pilot, we should maybe have reduced fares or something to really be able to tell if it, if it would work. But I, I just see this from a standpoint of, if we truly had a transit system that was reliable and worked, how many people would we have using it? I think it would be, I think it would be a lot. Uh, and this is where we differ. Uh, so, um, I, I would like to hear more. And I would like to know if there are places that are using this appointment-only kind of thing that, that works. I'd like to know how that works. But I really see it from the standpoint of determining who are the people, who would be the riders. I think we would have a lot of, of people who needed to get to work, but I think we would also have a lot of seniors, particularly in this, in this area and, and that aspect. And I, I think we need to explore that some more. Be glad to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wilton and then Mr. Wood.
Thank you both for taking the time to provide this information to us today. I, I think it's certainly needful and necessary. And I think you, you do actually make a good point as it relates to the investment, uh, that we make in, uh, transportation. Um, I guess the question is, as a city, are we willing to invest? And then, um, how much are we willing to invest in something like this? I can't tell you how many people I have talked to, um, the ages range from millennials to seniors who say to me, what are we going to do about our current transportation system? It's not working. And I, you know, we talk about, you know, the difficulty from getting from Virginia Beach to Newport News. I've heard people say it's difficult to get from, you know, areas like Centerville to the oceanfront. So we indeed need to do something worthwhile to change, um, transportation, transportation system that we do have in place. I think this is a, a good pilot program. Uh, I think that, um, if we make that investment, I think we can learn from it. Uh, and I think we can change, uh, the transportation system in the area. And it, it's, it's not only going to be important for, um, businesses looking to relocate here. As was mentioned to, by Mr. Harrell with Amazon, they certainly do look at how their, uh, employees are going to get around and how innovative transportation is. So I definitely see the merit for the pilot, certainly in support of it. And, um, hope that this is something that we will do as a city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thanks. Um, circling back to, um, I did, uh, something that Mr. Moss and Ms. Henley said, talking about the, um, ability to have this service at, at no, no cost to the rider. So is, is, are you still like twenty, twenty-five percent Fairbox recovery right now?
Not during COVID, we're not.
Well, I mean, everything else being equal.
Okay. Pre-COVID, we were at eighteen percent Fairbox return.
Okay. So, so this one would probably be more akin to paratransit in terms of Fairbox recovery. So it'd be significantly less than eighteen percent than at that point, right?
Yes.
Is that fair to say?
Yes.
So, so it would seem to me then that, that the point that Mr. Moss and Ms. Henley are making is that we, we can do this with, with not spending a whole lot more money to, to make this a free, uh, option. And, and again, I was mentioning the, the, um, the part of my experience in Vegas and Phoenix where granted, those are much more urban localities and a lot denser, but, but their circulators are free. And I would tell Mr. Moss, I did not invent the phrase "choice rider." They did. But, you know, I just, I heard them say it enough times that, that's why I know the phrase "choice rider." But, uh, but I, but I would like to see us and, and maybe just talk to the manager about this as well. That, that I really think that part of this study needs to be the city putting in the additional funding so that we can actually do this as a free thing to see what kind of ridership it's going to be. Because, because, you know, you know, John's right, choice riders are important. But Ms. Henley's absolutely correct too, because there are a lot of people that are going to be using this, um, or that could use this to, to go for medical appointments, things like that. And I, I didn't really consider the age of the neighborhoods and I think that, that's an extremely good point. Um, so, so I, I would really like to see us take a look at, at spending a couple extra bucks and making this free, free through the pilot program and, and see if it works. So.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
I want to make, uh, two comments. One, we're very fortunate, I guess, with people who take Medicare Advantage programs. All those mostly now are providing transportation to doctor appointments as part of their insurance. So people who are on Medicare, actually, if they choose an Advantage plan, actually have that coverage today with most of the Advantage providers. I won't say all, cause it's always the one, or the two. But most of them provide transportation and medical appointments today, which I think is great. Whether they're finding the offset and the overall benefits within the cost structure, I don't know. But I'm sure once you sign up for one, you find out. But, yeah. But I want to get back and talk about our transportation system. Cause I think it doesn't give credit to the value of the money that we have put into our transportation. But if you look at the studies on the Hampton Roads, our average commute time is about the same that it was 20 years ago. It really hasn't dramatically going, gone up, commuting time has not in this area. Maybe that's because we haven't had the employment growth that we would like to have, so that's not necessarily a good measurement. But also, we've invested a lot of money on connecting roadways to Chesapeake. We've done lots of things to make moving around the city better. So when someone says how bad our transportation system is, they haven't been to places where it's bad. I could name a few places. So I'm not saying it couldn't always be better, but I just want to make sure that we're giving proper credit to what the taxpayers have paid for and how well the staff has done with it, and how well we really do move people, whether it's to the outdoor places when the concerts are taking place, because of the roadways, damn neck, you name it, the Independence, Prince Dan, Feral Parkway, really moving around our city, except when the streets are flooded, we'll work on that, really is very good relative to what you would experience in many communities in the United States. I'm not saying it can't be better, but I do want to acknowledge just what we have done that makes things getting around. And if it's, of course, now with COVID, if you're traveling after nine o'clock at night, there's no one on the highway nonetheless. But I just wanted to make that one point, and I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else at this point? Yeah, I just want to say thank you, and I think, you know, this was a very good discussion that we had among us, and obviously, public transportation is paramount, you know, to, you know, a good society. The fact is, you know, we have a dilemma right here in Virginia Beach, and, you know, it's geography and demography. You know, we have rural area, and we have congested areas, we have, we have a lot of round neighborhoods that really make getting from the, the point of entry into the system to the vehicle to there, and, you know, there were all kinds of logistical challenges there, you know, especially with the elderly getting, you know, to their doctor appointments. But two things to take into consideration is that, once again, as we look to the future, you know, there was, we had discussions on autonomous vehicles eventually coming into play, which actually can go into a congested cul-de-sac, you know, pick somebody up and get them to a doctor's appointment. You know, that might be on the horizon. I know, I guess Virginia Tech is working on, you know, some of those pilot programs and things like that. So I guess, you know, the nature of public transportation is going to be changing, you know, and evolving as we go forward. And I know that you folks at HRT are looking at that. But I think the important thing, and I think, you know, Vice Mayor Wood kind of highlighted it, and everybody, the importance of this. One other major factor is economic development, because when companies come down here, they have to make sure that the workforce, you know, is mobile and able to get there. And even with the military, they have to be mobile and able to get where they're going to. So, but once again, I think this was a good discussion, and it's food for thought, and I really take you, thank you all for taking the time to come here, and we'll stay around. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, I'm sorry, could, council members, could you just check your microphones? And if they're on, turn them off. There's a little bit of feedback. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeHaney.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Bill Hanbury is going to join us via WebEx. He will brief you on the CVB Community Task Force recommendation as it relates to the future organizational structure for the agency. As previously communicated, the recommendation, if accepted by council, will necessitate amendments to your 2021 legislative agenda.
First met Bill Hanbury at your February retreat where he gave the initial findings of his report regarding an analysis of our Convention Visitors Bureau. He has 30 years of experience in the industry. He's well-respected. He's the former CEO of the Bermuda Tourism Authority, Destination DC, Visit Milwaukee, and the Chambers of Commerce of Hilton Head, Buffalo, and Syracuse, and has wealth of experience, including a master's of public administration from Harvard Kennedy School of Government. So Bill has been very instrumental in helping us organize the task force, conduct the, the business of the task force this fall, and, and help with the recommendations that, that he's bringing forward. He's joining us from Syracuse via WebEx this evening.
Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Hanbury, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning your presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Council members, thank you for the important time to discuss this, this initiative. On be, on behalf of the 17 members of the CVB Task Force and the city professional staff, I'm pleased to present this report. Let me begin with task force background, if I may, and if you could advance to the next slide. Task force was chartered by the city council in July of 2020. It's comprised of 17 members from a diverse group of civic stakeholders. Council members Tower and Wilson represented the council and co-chaired the meetings, was an engaged, enthusiastic, and candid interaction with members. High percentage of engagement and over 270 hours of volunteer time went into the work of, of the task force. We convened six meetings, and during those meetings, we studied DMO industry best practices. We evaluated governance structure of competitors and high-performance DMOs, destination marketing organizations. We learned directly from highly regarded DMO executives. We literally reviewed hundreds of pages of industry background material, and we considered finance, HR, and operations designs of various DMO models. Next page, please. The task force reviewed several major challenges which currently limit Virginia Beach's CVB's ability to perform at a high level. Some of these issues included the fact that the CVB governance structure is not typical of other destination marketing organizations. Of the 31 U.S. DMOs with budgets of over $20 million, there is only one other with a direct government affiliation. The city enthusiastically supports the CVB, but surprisingly, and sometimes alarmingly, the private sector has either lukewarm or negative impressions of the organization. Private sector also has very limited tangible method of supporting the CVB and little opportunity to provide valuable guidance to its staff, and that not only financial support, but also intellectual support through boards or committees. Compensation levels for the CVB employees are below national DMO standards, and the higher the management position, the greater the variance. Thus, it's impossible to attract the best executive leadership, in particular, a CEO. Both the resort area tourism product and the convention center market position continue to deteriorate. These factors have limited the CVB's capacity to properly market the destination. So we were charged by the, by the city council to evaluate new options for governance structure of the city's DMO. And we looked at three, we were charged with three, looking at three options. Remain within government, which is the current structure of the CVB. Consider hybrid public-private foundation or authority structure similar to the Virginia Tourism Authority, or consider a separate 501(c)(6) nonprofit corporate entity common to chambers of commercees or other DMOs around the United States. The task force early on in the proceedings decided to move away from considering the structure within government, and they did so for three major reasons. And it wasn't done lightly, it was seriously considered. First, the need to hire a CEO and senior executives outside the constraint of the city's human resource parameters was felt absolutely necessary by the task force. The need for procurement nimbleness and speed to market in the face of rapidly changing market conditions was also fundamental to the task force's decision. And then the third one, the need to increase the local hospitality industry's opportunity to participate in the management of the DMO. The task force focused then on seriously considering both the hybrid authority and the 501(c)(6) nonprofit model. In the end, the task force decided with 16 yes votes and one abstention that the preferred recommendation was an authority model which would give the city increased oversight, transparency, and cost savings compared to the 501(c)(6) nonprofit. We also considered, as part of the task force's charge, a consideration around the convention center and what should happen with the convention center if, in fact, there was a change within the organizational structure of the CVB. And here, here's that recommendation. Convention center should remain a city asset, and the city should maintain responsibility for operations, maintenance, and capital improvements. The convention center staff, who are operationally focused, should remain as city employees. The CVB importantly should continue to provide sales and marketing services for the convention center, as is the current arrangement. And as part of the overall agreement between the city and this new proposed authority, there would be specific convention center sales and marketing deliverables, which would be established. The deliverals would include detailed performance indicators which must be achieved. And this is the current structure of the CVB under a CVB director. And so the one change you see here would be that the CVB would no longer have any authority over the convention center. It would reside within, within city government. So here are the advantages that the task force considered as far as, as the authority model was concerned. And they, they include four specific areas of, of responsibility. First is governance, and the thought being from the, from the, from the task force that from a governance perspective, under the authority model, we would continue a close affiliation with city government. There would be adequate transparency through record-keeping, financial and budget reporting to the city, plus a required annual audit. There would be direct city council participation in the selection of a board of directors. Engagement of the private sector in oversight of the DMO through a board of directors' representation, and certain and creation of a robust committee structure, so that not only would the city council participate, but also there would be strong, a strong connection between the private sector and the board of directors also. And then we would redefine the organization's mission and strategic imperatives. Continuing with governance, this would allow the private sector an opportunity to contribute to the DMO's success through personal engagement, plus providing new financial contributions and in-kind resources. We heard this again and again from the private sector that they just didn't have an opportunity to plug into the, into the organization. Excuse me for one sec. Also, from a governance perspective, they would require the CEO and the DMO staff a laser focus on achieving board-established key performance indicators. They would develop formal organizational protocols for strategic plans, three to five years for strategic plans and for tactical plans annually. And then the ability to emulate the successful experience of the Virginia Tourism Authority, we felt was critically important. For employees, the CEO and the board of directors will rewrite employee performance policies and assure accountability and achievement of key performance indicators. More flexibility concerning employee compensation to attract and retain high-performance employees. This includes the ability to recruit a new CEO and an adequate compensation level. And then the other component of employee advantages under the, the authority model, existing employees would continue as members of the Virginia retirement system and the consolidated benefits program available to city employees. From a marketing and sales perspective, the authority also provided advantages. Improved the DMO's ability to collaborate, innovate, and act nimbly by maximizing speed to market from a, from a marketing, business intelligence, consulting, partner, and sales perspective. Simplify procurement challenges for complex and/or opportune media buys related to web-based, digital, and other timely advertising solutions. And this, and that, that became, that becomes a very important component for, particularly in the, in the web applications and the way that we're, we're managing our media buys these days. Refocus the DMO group sales effort to reflect the reality of Virginia Beach's current market position. And then a new focus by the DMO on local tourism product and experience to both improve Virginia Beach's customer offerings and better align the destination with emerging consumer trends. From an operations and a cost perspective, the authority model also had advantages. It provides purchasing flexibility by eliminating the city's stringent procurement system. This new nimbleness and speed to market will improve the DMO's ability to successfully negotiate a marketing, advertising, consulting, and external vendor agreements. The authority also has cost advantages over a 501(c)(6) nonprofit model due to continuing close affiliation with city government. These savings include possible cost savings from city-provided operational support. Health insurance could remain within the consolidated benefit plan, which offers competitive rates and high-quality coverage for individual employees, which we consider to be an important consideration. The authority can also take advantage of other employee benefits, EAP, BEWEL, vision care, training, which provide economies of scale by remaining within the city's plans. So the recommended next steps from the task force to the council, amend the 2021 legislative agenda to request that the general assembly create the Virginia Beach Tourism Authority. The proposed legislation model would be similar to the Virginia Tourism Authority. It would establish the Virginia Beach Tourism Authority, charter a board of directors appointed by, appointed by the city council, allow the board to hire a CEO who shall employ the required members of the staff. The powers of the authority board would also include adopting and amending bylaws, executing contracts, retaining vendors, securing insurance, plus all other necessary management and operational requirements. The authority could receive private sector grants and contributions, plus charge fees for activities and services provided by the organization. The authority would be tax exempt, and then also the authority would be exempt from the Virginia Public Procurement Act. Additional steps that would be taken in addition to the proposed legislation would include, and this would be work done by the staff in the coming weeks, we would author a detailed CVB transition plan and timeline for your consideration. Make recommendations for the establishment of a transition committee. Develop a city-supported do-no-harm employee transition process. Determine an authority funding recommendation for the city council to consider. And then finally, draft a marketing and coordination agreement between the city of Virginia Beach and the Virginia Tourism, the new Virginia Beach Tourism Authority. And with that, I'm, I'm glad to take any questions there may be, and welcome the opportunity to interact with council members.
Good. Okay.
I have comments, but no questions for the briefer.
Okay, Mr. Moss. Any questions at this point? Ms. Henley?
Ms. Henley, could you turn your microphone on, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the document that we, we got. You, you've had an extensive compilation of the minutes of all of these meetings, which really allowed those of us who weren't in the meetings to know what was going on, and that was very good. Plus, you included the PowerPoints for, that you had at each of those and other information. So this was a very good document for us. Took a long time to read it, and I can't say that I understand all of it. I think the thing that blew me away, though, was when I read that the medium salary for the CEO of an authority is $400,000, and somehow or other, I'm, I'm just not sure how the funding relates for this proposed authority and the city, and, and the authority for the authority and the city all relates together. I just still have a lot to learn. I can be assured of that. Of course, I very much want the convention center and the Convention Visitors Bureau and all of its components to be very successful. That is a given. But I, I really am confused, particularly since we are participating this week in interviews with the headhunter hired to find the CEO. with the headhunter hired to find the CEO, and I don't know what we're beginning to offer him for a salary. So I'm just confused. I don't have specific questions. I think I just don't know enough about all of this.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Moss.
Is there some type of performance standard that we're going to be requiring of the leadership and the people that you're suggesting would be appointed?
Councilman, perhaps Bill can expound upon that as far as best practices, but what would be considered is that there would be, yes, an agreement between the city and the authority, and there would be key performance indicators and metrics that the authority is expected to meet if there's consideration, which is the current scenario, that there would be funding support coming from the city in order to support the operations of the authority. Yes, sir.
All right, do I understand, I'm sorry, I had to leave for a few minutes, so I may have missed something. But do I understand, are these people going to be city employees?
No, sir. They would be employees of the authority.
But they are going to have all the benefits and so forth?
That was...
Of city employees, is that right?
And that is the proposal, yes, sir. That is modeling what the Virginia Tourism Authority has. There are several entities at the state level, including the VTC, which is actually the Virginia Tourism Corporation, actually by code is Virginia Tourism Authority. And that sets them up as a quasi-governmental, but they have the ability to contract with the Virginia Retirement System, and then they also similarly have the benefit of the state benefits as well with that. But they have the flexibility of a personnel and procurement system that is outside of what the rest of the government has. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And Mr. Moss, if it's okay, could we let Mr. Tower ask a question, and then you can make your comments, okay? Thank you, sir.
I really don't have a question. I just thought I would try to clarify a couple of things. One is, and I don't think it was intended, that one of the slides that I was focusing on as you went through it was indicated that the key performance indicators would be related to the convention center, and they certainly would. But I wanted to make it clear that we're talking about the overall tourism business of the city that produces revenue from the city for a number of different sources all over the resort area and in other areas as well. So it's not limited to the convention center, nor to the sports center, which wasn't mentioned also, but they're tying theirs as well. So the idea would be to develop performance indicators, as responded to Councilman Jones' question, that made the CEO really where the buck stops. Also, the issue about whether they would be city employees, and I know Mr. Moss raised this in some comments that he sent to us in writing, all of which were very thoughtfully as usual, but one in particular about the, well, are they going to have all of the benefits? And some of the benefits include the process of hiring and firing. And I think the idea is to have city employees who did move to the authority be able to transport their, it's one of the great advantages of the authority, be able to transport, hopefully, their retirement and their health insurance, if that turned out to be the best way to deal with it. It's possible to do that through an authority. But ultimately, and I don't mean ultimately, as in many years, we didn't talk about a specific transition period, but at some point, the employees that transferred would become at-will employees of the authority and would be subject to discharge in the same way that private employers could discharge employees. So that's an important part of it. And certainly, the CEO would be the same way. A CEO who was underperforming in the view of the board, and a lot of that would be based on measurables, we would hope, would be subject, he wouldn't have any tenure that went beyond perhaps a year or something, some short term, not going to be any long-term contracts. They're very, these jobs pay a lot, but they're very performance-oriented. I'm not sure if helped or hurt, but just a couple of thoughts I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moss, thank you for your patience.
Not a problem, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much. I always want in engineering, you want to stay out of the interface. Most dangerous place is when the aircraft is transitioning to land, because you're going for something that's designed to fly to something that's trying to land, where it's not supposed to operate. So what we had here in the beginning is something that we thought our public system was underperforming and could not meet our expectations. But nowhere in the report does it establish what specifically the problems are with the status quo. Where was it failing? What drove those failures to meet expectations? And what about the future says that it's going to be less able and agile to meet the future? Meanwhile, every budget I've been in, and as you have all been in, tell us what progress we're making, how, in these times of crisis, we're outperforming. Our employees are getting a recognition within the industry for how great they are. So it's kind of a contradiction of terms, but nonetheless, any critical thinking always says, what is the problem we're trying to solve? Why is the status quo unable to solve it? What would be the measurements, how we would define success if you could solve it? And how do we evaluate the alternatives against that? None of that is in the task force report. What we did see is an assessment of all the different models that are out there, which is great. There's totally private sector models, and if we were proposing that today, but we have the stay-in-the-interface model. You know, all the things that are expensive, a non-performing cash flow, negative cash flow asset being the convention center, we get to keep. It's like a teenager saying, Dad, buy me a car, pay the insurance, pay for the oil and gas, and give me an allowance to drive it, but don't ask me any questions where I go. I mean, I can understand why you would want to exclude the convention center, though I think we should seriously look at privatizing that function and just take the write-off and move on. Also, the report doesn't really acknowledge, it says in that big report here, that we have evolved to an economy visitor. That's in one of those presentations. And also, that there's a marketplace perception that we're less safe than other tourist destinations. Now, I'm not saying whether that's true or not, I'm just saying they said it was true. But nothing about the authority can do anything about those two things, per se, and be held accountable for it, anyway. So, and then on, so I think, well, so what is it that the authority is going to be able to do that our organic people, under our city manager's leadership, which apparently we haven't been giving them poor performance ratings, so something can't be, they can't occupy the same square of truth. I think they've been doing a great job. So what are the barriers that we would have to remove to solve those problems if we wanted to? Now, we could say escaping the Procurement Act, that's true. How many of these other cities have had issues where they've had buddy-buddy contracts and other kind of issues? Because when you have less oversight, less competition, you get less than free and open boards sometimes, contractual relationships. I think if we're going to be accountable for something, which we indirectly will be by the public, I think competition makes sense. What about our swim business opportunities that we've worked so hard to put in place? I mean, there's just, I just think we haven't, this thing deserves a lot more rigorous work. And the fact, my concern from the beginning was that the composition of this board only had one person on it that wasn't directly a beneficiary or within the scope of the authority of the task force. So, and I think they kind of worked to a conclusion they wanted to come to, which was the status quo can't deliver. And I'm not yet willing to say that this report has made that case. Now, they say they can't hire the right people because our compensation is too low, but they want to bring everybody with them. Well, they might not want to, but that's what they're proposing. I'm just saying how, so, and then, I guess, but my view is, but they want to be using public money to pay them, because they say they can't go totally private, because the private industry can't sustain the cost of being private. So we're going to give public money to a group that has very little, very little effectual accountability to us? I'm more in favor of having discussions. I don't know what the answer is, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues, but I want to understand more about why the status quo is incapable of meeting the expectations, which they don't define in this document, of what we want to achieve with tourism. Because clearly, they can't make us more safe. There's nothing in their authority that's going to make me away with a perception of safety. But they can, maybe through some of their events, maybe do something with economy tourists, but I think we don't have the good association of the cause and effect of what we see and why the status quo isn't adequate. I do not think they've made the case for having public money that we're now paying on the status quo. I'd rather figure out why the status quo isn't working and fix it than take an approach where I give the money away and they go off and have this distant accountability. And if that's the case, then what we should offer, I believe, is find places, because we have a lot of vacancies, Mr. City Manager, ask all our employees who want to stay, and then they hire all their people with private sector benefits, private sector leave, private sector health insurance, all those things, because they say the private sector is more efficient. That's why they want to pay this enormous salary, they'll get better people, and the people in the private sector don't get defined benefit pensions. They generally don't pay 80% of the family health insurance. They generally don't let people carry over leave. There's just all sorts of things. So if you want to be a private organization and operate like a private organization, then be one and enjoy all the ups, as well as all the downs that the free enterprise system offers. But to say you want $400,000 salaries, but you want the pension, you want the healthcare, you want, that's not a private sector organization. That's an extension of government, and I don't think, and if they're going to promise all these results and they're so confident, then they should not need public resources. I think we shouldn't be doing all the things he just mentioned. We haven't heard from the public yet. We haven't discussed this in great detail yet, and they're already marching down as if this is a fait accompli. Maybe it is. I'd like to think that it's not, but I think we owe the public. And I think we owe our Certain Convention Bureau at least the respect of understanding what is it about it that failed, or what is it about it that it worked, but it's incapable of adapting to the future? Because basically, it's basically condemning our current organization, and maybe that's appropriate. But if it's not appropriate, we shouldn't be changing. I want to know why the status quo is incapable of doing the job that we want, and obviously at the right time, that's something that we would expect our city manager to tell us, why he thinks his, the current, because he wasn't here, so he doesn't own it, so he can be a little bit more objective without having to take a hit for it. But does he really believe that, given what we want it to achieve, that our in-house organization can't do that? And then if and when he says that, then I think we need to look at, well, do we want to go to a total private model, which I would prefer? But at least, there's some things about this that are too much into our pocket for an organization that's supposed to be private. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Tower.
Well, I don't want to try to respond to all of Mr. Moss's comments. As I said, I think a lot of them are worth discussing and well-taken, but just a couple of responses. One, the salary numbers that are out there are, as far as I know, accurate, but they don't reflect necessarily what it would take to get somebody at this market at this time. And I would think if we did, were able to, if we did decide that we would contract with the authority to provide health insurance at the costs of the city, plus whatever, maybe some administrative costs, I don't know, or that the authority was going to be able to provide to the CEO the level of benefits that was not available in the private sector, that it could affect the salary that was paid as well. So it's not piling on top. And I'm just not sure where Mr. Moss, coming from his last comment was, for an organization that should be private. I don't know where it says it should be. We've been, it hasn't been private in our experience, and while it's been private in some areas, it's not completely private. There's a lot of city money going into these DMOs in other areas, whether by grant, I'm not sure of the mechanism, but they're not all privately funded. Some have the ability to fund privately because of the size you take, I mean, we're not Las Vegas. That's, for starters, the hotel industry there is enormous and could fund a lot, but I don't, I take exception to the idea that there is some way that we should have a private organization. I mean, if you really believe that, then there's no sense pursuing this. I think your points about kind of why did we fail and how is this going to happen, I think are very well-taken, though. I think those are worth discussing. But I'd ask Mr. Handberry if he's got any comments about it.
At this point, I think if we can kind of move forward, unless there's any other real discussion at this point, you know, we really have to get through and get to executive. Okay? Would that be okay? Okay. All right, thank you.
Then we are going to be voting next week to put this in the legislative package? I mean, that's the recommendation, because we have to have the approval of the General Assembly in order to create an authority, so wasn't that the recommendation? Are we going to move ahead with that? I know we...
Having the ability to do it and actually doing it could be two different things.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Having the ability to do it and actually doing it could be two different things.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, but...
But are we going to vote? And we haven't had a public hearing yet, or what is the step?
I don't think we're going to be able to hold it until January 5th. Our process is always to have a public hearing. We've been sticking to, even if it's not been helpful.
We've been sticking to the policy, even when it hasn't always been helpful, because I think it's consistency of having a public hearing intervened by a meeting, which in this case, we would have one on, I guess, would be the retreat. And then at the next formal meeting that we meet would be January 5th, I believe that's correct. And that would be the first meeting that we could vote if we're not having, but I don't think this is an issue that ourselves were decided upon that we want to do, so why would we be asking for something that we aren't ourselves in agreement that we want? In fact, that, you know, they're late to the train, doesn't make it our problem.
Okay, thanks, Joan. The will of council to hold, you know, the discussion and vote till the first meeting in January?
Well, I would be in favor of doing it before then, because as Ms. Wilson says, the fact that we're asking for it doesn't mean we have to, we're not committed to employ it. I hope we would, but it wouldn't be the first time people have asked for legislation that wasn't followed up on. I'd also like to see if Mr. Handberry's got some response to some of the questions that Mr. Moss raised, just because I think it would be useful to take another five minutes or whatever he, what he wants to say. He is our expert in this field, and I think we ought to take advantage of, in fact, we've got him on the line right now.
City Mayor, if that's all right? I will take a minute.
Maybe we could have extended conversation next week.
Mr. Mayor, I told the next briefing that we're not going to do that one. We'll move it to the beginning of next year.
That would be fine. Okay, thank you. But... That would be fine. Okay, thank you. But, you know, once again, if we could just try to, you know, get a handle on this, because we do have to get to executive. Okay. Mr. Hanbury, if you could respond.
Thank you. Mr. Hanbury, if you'd like to respond to some of the comments, just pause two to three seconds before, before beginning. Thank you. If you could begin, please. Thank you. I apologize. Mr. Hanbury, if you could begin. Thank you.
You can unmute me. Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, there, as, as the council received the briefing last February, there was a 60-page research study done specifically concerning the failures of the CBB under the, the city mandate. And they related back to serious concerns about the executive leadership that was, that was not felt to be adequate to manage the organization in a level, at a level that was, would allow it to compete with the best of destinations in the country. The procurement issues were a serious, serious issue, related back to speed to market and certainly related back to nimbleness and how we, how we deploy our marketing assets, particularly digital assets. The complete lack of hospitality industry to, within any input into the organization was a serious, serious concern. And the efforts here was to try to change that by allowing the private sector to both not only participate from a board of directors perspective, but also to participate from a in-kind or financial consideration. There's a lot of complaining about the fact that this is a really expensive thing to do, and this is one method in order to bring the, the private sector along and allow them to contribute both intellectual capacity and also financial resources, in-kind resources, to make sure that we get up to, up to speed where we are from, where we are from a marketing perspective. And so I'm glad to resend the 60-page report that was done back in February, that was submitted to the city, that again provided chapter and verse on all of the deficiencies that are associated with the lack of performance by the CBB. And the simple reality is, we're, we are hitting on three or four cylinders in relative terms. And yes, we do have a dynamic tourism economy, and we have a lot of people employed in the tourism economy, but we can be so much more than what we are, and we're just not achieving at our full potential. So this was, the purpose of this was to assure that we achieve at our full potential. And there are no destinations in America that don't use tax revenues to promote their tourism assets. These assets, these tax revenues are generated by restaurants and hotels, and to reinvest them into the destination and into the marketing activities is exactly what every other destination in America does. And there are no destinations that do it from a private sector perspective. Zero out of 750-plus in the United States, not one does it from a private sector perspective.
Yeah, just one question, and John, we do-
Do all those organizations, 750, do the municipalities pay for all the staff that's at those organizations?
In many respects, they, they, they pay for the vast majority of that. What some destinations do very well is they bring private sector support to, to what they do. And by providing either for membership fees or cooperation fees or other kinds of co-op activities, they help subsidize the CBB. And I think that's part of the intention of the authority here would be to build a robust program that connects the private sector to this authority and requires them to support the work of the, the authority. And again, lessening the burdens of government by providing private sector assets is one of the intentions of the authority idea.
Hey, and you know, at this point, I appreciate it, but we do got to move on. If I can make a suggestion, and we polled the council, two options to discuss this next, next week and vote on it on the first meeting in January, or one from column B, and that is to vote on it next week. So if we, if it's okay, Madam Clark, could you poll the council whether we should have the vote on it next week or the first week in January?
Sure, sorry. Councilmember Abbott, I think we should be consistent with our policy, our unofficial policy, whatever we're calling it now, and, and we should vote in January. Councilmember Leachey?
I'm comfortable to vote next week to allow us the opportunity to exercise that option if we decide that's the course to take.
Councilmember Henley?
January.
Councilmember Jones?
January.
Councilmember Moss?
January.
Councilmember Tower?
I would vote next week. I want to make it clear, we're, we're only talking about voting on the legislative package. Add it, add this to the legislative package. Correct?
We understand that, Mr. Ta-
Councilmember Wilson?
For the legislative package next week.
Vice, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wooton?
January.
Vice Mayor Wood? Next week.
Yeah, next week.
Thank you. Mayor Dyer?
January.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Six to four in January. So we'll have, so can I just make, make sure I understand, we're going to have a public, we have public comment next week? We can't get a public hearing ad in the paper for advertisement, but can we, we'll go do a public comment next week and vote in January? Is that my understanding?
That would be a high count.
Or we take a public comment? I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood the options.
What do you think, public comment? Yeah.
Or have more discussion first.
Public comment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. But, you know, this is, this is an important decision going forward, and I can certainly understand both sides. But once again, we just got to, you know, it's a very complicated thing. So I appreciate everybody. Okay, at this point, if we can, we are going to defer the next conversation and move on to council liaison reports? Please, if we can, folks, if we can be brief, we have to get into executive. Okay, how about council comments? Yep. Yes.
Just very, very briefly, I just want to mention, it will be about two weeks now that we had the Ignite Business, Business Series that focused on our important veteran community population here in Virginia Beach. And it was entitled Veterans Unlimited Opening Doors. And I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor for coming out to give opening remarks that were well-received. And it was also good to see the number of regional partners that we have who collaborate to provide much-needed services for our veteran population, as well as it was an opportunity to talk about what Virginia Beach is doing to support our veteran population as well. So I'd like to, you know, also thank city council for being supportive of Ignite and, and just to say that, you know, and let our veteran population know that we are here to serve you, your family, and your needs. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Belucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make my remarks brief. But I did want to share that I was contacted earlier this week by business owner in the Holland Plaza Shopping Center area who expressed some frustration with the VB relief program, specifically the two-year qualification for relief. And I, and I wanted to share this update for a variety of things. One, for anyone who's listening, I'm happy to say the two-year qualification has been removed by LISC. And I think that's an important update to share with the public. So now any business can qualify for that level of relief. And I also just wanted to thank the business owner. I wish I had their permission to share their name and business, but I wasn't able to reach them in time to do that. But I want to thank them for bringing that to our attention. I think it expands access to this important relief to more businesses in Virginia Beach. Many of, many of the businesses that are most vulnerable, that are suffering, suffering the greatest, are the ones that did recently open. And so I think it's very appropriate to extend that relief opportunity to them. And I also want to thank the city manager and everyone with LISC and everyone involved who, who worked for the city of Virginia Beach, who are so responsive, so quickly responsive to make that adjustment. And so for, I just, for those three points I wanted to make, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Belucci, Mr. Vice Mayor, consent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances resolutions, item five is going to be heard. They're speakers. Does anybody want to hear any of the other items or vote no on any items if they're on consent?
Mr. Moss.
I have a comment. I'll be abstaining on the street closure.
Can you, can you tell me which one that is?
I'll be abstaining on the street closure. I'm trying to read which item it is. I know it's on here.
That's J.2, Mr. Moss. That's planning number two.
Yes, thank you. I'm going ahead of myself. On this particular one, though, under ordinances, this is item seven. I sent all of you an email where I proposed an alternative wording, and I know no one's had a chance to. I have copies of it here, but I don't like to make people not have a chance to study something, so I conversed with the city manager, and he said deferring this to the, until next week would be fine. And I would like people to have adequate time to look at what I'm proposing, and it doesn't cause any execution issues for the city manager.
I think that's item number one.
That's item seven, right?
It's item seven?
I want.
Item, which one?
It's item one.
Item one, okay. Everybody okay with deferring that one week? All right?
And I have one other comment I'm willing to vote for, but on this market salary survey, I, I understand that we really are going to expand beyond the, what the wording of the resolution is. And I take the manager at his word that what we're going to do, so I'm happy with it.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
Is my understanding that number three, I three is off? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, I sent a letter to the council indicating that that would need to be deferred indefinitely for re-advertising.
I three deferred indefinitely. That's consent for indefinite deferral?
And are we, Mr. Vice Mayor, can I ask you a question? Are we, are we including here the property tax exemptions?
That, that's next week, isn't it?
That's just a public hearing.
That's just for public hearings this week.
That's just public hearings.
Okay, all right. I just had a couple of comments.
Okay. All right. So then, anybody want to vote no? Want to need the rest of these? It'll be on consent. Okay.
On to planning.
Okay. Under planning, Reed M. Whalen, Michael J. Whalen, Revocable Trust for Subdivision Platt, Recordation, 3652 North Landing Road, Prince Sand District.
Well, we did receive an extensive email today with someone very concerned about this being a, a lot that could be, will be built on probably with a lot of flooding issues. And I, I share my concern for what's happening in that area. But any, anything that's built is going to have to meet the new standards. And so I'm, I'm thinking that, that that will help alleviate the situation somewhat. And since it has been an existing lot for this length of time, I, I think we need to go ahead and approve it.
I'm voting no on that item.
Okay. Item two, Atlantic Park, Inc., City Virginia Beach Development Authority for street closures, and it lists them all there in the Beach District. Mr. Moss, you're abstaining on this one?
Correct. I have a letter.
Everybody else okay on this one?
Okay.
Number three, CSA Virginia Beach LLC Freedom Land Investment for Modification of Conditions Ray Indoor Recreation Facility, 5070 Virginia Beach Boulevard, Bayside District.
I'm fine with it.
Burger Busters, Inc., Balboa LLC Special Exception for Alternative Compliance to Decorative Features on Building Facade and Extend Drive-Thru Hours at 2902 Pacific Avenue, Beach District. Number five, Life in His Word Christian Ministries, JR Moulton Family LLC for Conditional Use Permit Ray Religious Use at 11 Indian River Road between 6620 and 6608 Indian River Road, Kempsville District.
I have a quick question for staff, if I can ask it real fast. Is Bobby here? Bobby, my, my question is related to the, the parking on this one, because I did drive over, over to it, and I, I don't think it's a problem right now, and I'm comfortable with it as it is. But I'm wondering if, is this conditional use permit reviewed administratively ever again, or is it, once we approve it, they've got it?
If there are, there's always the opportunity, if there are violations of the conditional use permit, for it to be brought back to the city council for consideration.
Okay.
But it's not under, there is no condition right now that has the yearly review of the planning director in it.
Well, I don't think an annual review is really necessary. And I don't anticipate with COVID being the way it is that there'd be any massive growth of the church. But it does seem that they have a potential parking problem if they do grow, which is what I'm a little concerned about. So is it out of the ordinary to have like a, in the, in five years to administratively review it? Is that-
I believe the timeframe can be added in for a review at the discretion of the council.
I don't think it needs to come back to us, but I think if it could in five years be reviewed administratively to make sure that they're still, you know, not going to cause their neighbors a problem with their parking, I would be, I'm, I'm okay with it.
So you would be, you would be approving it for a five-year period with the ability for an administrative renewal? That would be a new condition?
Okay. Do I just say, that would be what I'd be most comfortable with, if the council is agreeable to that.
All right. So Mark, tell me what that is. That's-
What would the condition number, what would the new condition number be, Bobby?
This is new one.
Condition nine.
So with the addition of condition, of condition nine, which would be for a five-year duration with the opportunity for administrative renewal?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Is that okay, so we can-
Hang on, let me just write it down.
All right.
Think we would need to, I mean, I think we would want to ask the applicant if they were acceptable to that condition. They don't have to agree, but your form, as form you normally ask, at least.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with asking. I'm not really that hung up on it, to be totally honest. I think it's okay. I just am a little uncomfortable with that they, they, that they don't have the acreage that we usually require, and that's what I'm most worried about. But I guess if, if you all are comfortable with the way it is and the council's comfortable with it, I'm okay. I just, I am a little concerned. I'm mildly concerned.
Okay. If, if council ladies okay with it, can I, should we-
All right. So I'm just going to put it on consent.
Yeah.
Without that.
Vice Mayor, I'm going to abstain on that item.
Okay.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, just to make sure I understand, no new condition? Is that what I just heard?
No, no new condition.
As written.
No, no new condition is fine.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item six, Brandon Samantha Hathaway, Conditional Use Permit Ray Outdoor Recreation Facility, 5025 Cullen Road, Bayside District. Okay, item six, Rosetta Denise Secante and Kyra's Paris LLC Conditional Use Permit, Assembly Use 2014 Atlantic Avenue, Beach District. Now, they, there, there was a speaker on that, but they're in support, right?
They're in support. She did indicate she'd like to make comments. We do have one speaker signed up on everything, but this particular individual is in support. So in the past-
Why don't you ask her and see if she wants to? And then if she does, we can, we can pull it if we have to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Number eight, Kendall Teague, Stewart Investments LLC, Conditional Use Permit Ray Beauty Salon in Lynn Haven District on Lynn Haven Road. I'm okay with that. Number nine, Greg Horvath, Greg Guessing, Carolyn in Horvath, Conditional Use Permit Ray Home Occupation, 2321 Vaughn Road in the Prince Sand District. All right, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussions or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held property where the discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.237 A3, Beach District, Beach District. Public contract, discussion or reward of public contracts involved in the expenditure of public funds and the discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussions in an open meeting session- of the terms or scope of such contract where discussions in an open meeting session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A. Twenty-nine, Dominion Energy Atlantic Substation Retirement; personnel matters discussion, consideration or interview with prospective candidates for the employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of the specific public officers, appointee, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section two point two thirty-seven A. One, city council appointments, council boards, commission, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Belucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye. Let the record reflect when I come and leave on the Dominion Energy item, which I have to abstain from.
Yes, sir. We will. Thank you. Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.